I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll have a, or ask for a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda, but strike the approval for claims as there are no claims this week.
I will second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
There are.
I had mine, so yeah.
Well, yes, you're right. There are engineers' claims.
That's good, babe. I'm paying some, so.
So, I'm gonna amend your motion.
Um, I don't know. I would, I prefer to see the claims before I approve them.
That's true.
I just emailed it to you, but I do have, I got the.
Can we table this till af, till like the?
Sure. Till begin?
Yeah, after the 10, 10:30?
Yes, then be fine.
Okay. So, I'll go ahead and amend my motion to approve the agenda as presented, and we'll just adjust the approval of the claims.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes, we have four sets of minutes. There's a couple that, or some of those that refer to the canvas, so obtain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from November 12th, November 12th canvassing, November 18th canvas, and the November 20th meetings.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, utility permits.
None of those.
All right, secondary roads.
Snow, melt and ice. It's kind of a, yeah, our job's different every day right now, but we'll work with what we got.
Good. All right. Review and approve the bridge inspection and rating program.
So, this is our firm. They've been working here since the turn of the century. They're a good firm. I have, you know, eight years' experience with them. So, you know, they're familiar with our bridges. It's nice, you call them, say, you know, a random bridge number, they know what you're talking about, so. They do good work, I can't complain. I think we should renew our contract.
Any big changes in the contract?
No. The prices stayed pretty much the same.
I'll make a motion to approve the bridge inspection rating program.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, Tim Fuller with Liberty National regarding open enrollment.
Do I stand here or go up there?
Up through the front two, please.
If you would, please.
I don't mind being in the center of attention. So, I do have some folders for you folks. It's similar to what we did for y'all last year. I know I'm not as pretty as the ladies I sent here last year. So, basically, we're just looking to get y'all's blessing to be able to come back and do the open enrollment again this year. Ms. Becca kinda took over, and she didn't feel that she had the obligation to kind of do it without asking again y'all's approval. So, I'm more than happy to go over the policies with you guys if you'd like, but more or less just trying to get the approval to kind of set things up with her and come back and meet with the employees again.
What would you guys prefer to do?
Go through it, take a little look at it, and put it on next week's agenda.
Yep.
Okay. Awesome.
Sounds good. So, if you want to just summarize what's in, in your proposal?
Perfect, perfect, perfect. So, on the first three pages, this is an easy-on-the-high summary of what we do and kind of the policies and averaged pricing for a 35-year-old. So, if they're older, it's gonna be a little bit more expensive. If they're younger, probably it's a little bit cheaper. So, if they have any questions, my cellphone number is on the first page as well, so they're more than happy to reach out to me. I don't want to add any word to Ms. Becca. We want to definitely take care of all of this for her. The first two descriptions, now I apologize, I spilled some coffee on some of my colored copies. So, this discount card is gonna be in a black-and-white copy, and it should be, yep, right there. And then the next one is a colored copy, and it's gonna be an accidental death policy. Those are where our marketing dollars goes, and each employee gets those through the county at no cost. So, the big reason for the open enrollment is to renew these because we put them in effect for one year at a time. So, when we come back and meet with them, we'll renew them again for the folks that are still employed through the county. Everything else is optional after that. So, we do similar with, our life insurance is really what stands us apart as far as the portability. It's permanent, till age 100, and there's no rerating. So, a lot of life insurance policies, y'all experience reratings throughout the lifetime of it. So, it's very unique because everyone's guaranteed to pay for your own expenses. So, we really look around those costs to make sure that there's not a GoFundMe page kind of around retirement age. Again, most people have a term policy. We're not looking to replace it because you want to back up your mortgage, things of that nature. So, we just want to complement it with a small policy that's permanent, that's not as expensive as a whole life. Now, the next one will be our cancer plan. So, on the back, kinda goes over everything that it pays out on. So, pretty much any treatment with cancer is gonna help pay out. The health insurance is used for the hospital bills, but most of us are living paycheck to paycheck, and if you're out of work three to six months, this is used to supplement your income in the time of need. The next one is, I can't remember if you guys do Aflac or not here. So, this is a complimentary cancer plan. So, it's a first diagnosis plan. It's for my folks that hate insurance agents, so you only have to deal with me one time. If you ever get diagnosed with cancer, you choose between $10,000 and $50,000, and we just kind of give you that check at the time of diagnosis to push your bills ahead. And the last one is my, oh, no, critical illness. So, same lump sum, $10,000 to $50,000 for heart attacks, strokes, kidney failures, and major organ transplants. So, again, upon diagnosis, we'll go ahead and pay that out to the insured. And then the last one is my accident protector. It's really popular with my road crews, the police department, my blue-collar individuals, and my folks that have kiddos that think they're Spider-Man. So, it's, it's one of our cheaper policies, and if you make one claim every three years, it pretty much pays for itself. So, I do have folks with six or seven kids that play football, and I'm very familiar with them, and I get six or seven phone calls a year from them. So, it's definitely a policy beneficial if you use it. Obviously, if you don't get injured, probably don't need the policy. So, we try to do a needs planner with each, each of the employees here, because if they don't need it, we don't want to offer it to them. But if they need it, obviously, we want to address the need.
All right.
Do you guys have any questions?
And when will, if we approve this next week, when will the open enrollment period start?
It would start December 15th through the end of January.
Okay.
So, I'd have any time to kind of meet with all the employees. I believe what we did last year is we set it up with the department heads, just kind of met with each department separately in the time of the month as well. All righty. And then, when do you guys want me to follow up?
Probably after next Wednesday.
After next Wednesday? Awesome. Do you want me to reach out to Ms. Becca?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, awesome. My pleasure, again. Very nice to meet you guys, and I appreciate your time for letting me interrupt you guys aboard me.
No, no problem.
Hope you guys have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you. Safe travels.
You guys take care.
Okay, we have a change of status for the sheriff's office.
I'd make a motion to approve the resignation of Nicholas Pott. He was permanent part-time correctional officer. Resignation is effective December 7th, 2019. He did attach a very nice, a very professional resignation letter. He has accepted a position as a police officer with the City of Muscatine, so I know we don't like to see loss, but he's gonna move on to bigger and better things and still remain a part of the law enforcement community, so appreciate his service.
Wish him well.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there any public comments?
As I look at the agenda, I'm wondering why the Timber's Edge Development Agreement is not on the agenda for the, as being kind of this regular board meeting.
I.
It's just, just they called and wanted to be put on, and it was like 10:14, so I settled for later, so it was past the time of the regular board meeting.
So, in theory, it's really gonna, you're going to have this discussion before you adjourn?
I mean, it's, we might have to recess. We're gonna take time to look at the claims, and we'll be doing, approving those, probably.
Because this could, you know, could possibly be an outlay of county money? I mean, is this just?
So, you're welcome to stay.
I will certainly stay, so.
Don.
It's often been said in this room by a person that you need a legal reason to recommend disapproval, disapproval for a confinement permit application. Last week, it was repeated by a second person. Under the section of the code titled "Construction Permit Application Review Process, Site Inspections, and Complaint Investigations," I quote, "The board shall include with the adopted recommendation a copy of the master matrix analysis calculations and scoring for the application. The board's adopted recommendations submitted to the department may be based on the master matrix or on comments received by the board. The adopted recommendations shall include the specific reasons and any supporting documentation for their decision to recommend approval or disapproval of the application," unquote. The phrase "legal reason" does not exist in this paragraph and therefore appears to be a fallacy. It does say the board's recommendation can be based on comments received by the board. Again, no legal reason required. It has often been said in this room that the board's recommendation is just an opinion. The definition of an opinion also has no requirement of a legal reason. The only place the word "legal" is even used is in the demand for an appeal hearing. I quote, "The demand for a hearing shall include a statement setting forth all of the county board of supervisors' reasons why the application for a permit should, should be approved or disapproved, including legal briefs and all supporting documentation." Again, not the phrase "legal reason," but simply a legal brief. Since your recommendation of disapproval does not require a legal reason, perhaps a recommendation of disapproval for the reason of citizen objection would show the majority of voters that you are actually listening to the people who hired you. If any part of the code states that a legal reason is required for, for a recommendation of disapproval, please let us know where it's stated.
Thank you, Don.
Any other public comments?
Yes.
You guys speak up here.
Sure.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Jacob Bolson. I'm a Winnesha County native that moved to Hardin County about 10 years ago, rural Hardin County, Tipton Township. And I am, not that it should matter when it comes to the topic of wind energy, but let the record state, I am a fiscally conservative Republican, which I believe you all three are registered Republicans. And I'm a wind energy convert, meaning I used to support wind energy. I thought, hey, this is great, little rural development, this is fantastic, until I found out exactly what wind energy is all about. So, I ask, if you remember about 10 years ago, 15 years ago, there used to be a series on NBC Nightly News called "The Fleecing of America." Some of you might remember that. They haven't had it in a number of years. To me, wind energy is the definition of modern-day fleecing of America. Fleecing of rural Iowa, fleecing of the taxpayers, and fleecing of Hardin County residents for a number of reasons. Number one, wind energy, as we're all aware, is not economically viable without a stream of tax credits to go with it. Thanks to Gianna Swanson from the Coalition for Rural, Rural Property Rights, I believe, in Iowa, but Northwest Iowa, you can poke around on Google for about five minutes and find some pretty scary economic analysis of how uneconomically viable wind energy is. Warren Buffett, one of the world's best investors, the owner of Berkshire Hathaway, also the owner of Mid-American Energy, is a huge proponent of wind energy. And Warren Buffett's a man that knows how to make billions of dollars, very successful businessman. He understands the fleecing of the taxpayers when it comes to wind energy, because you can find some interviews out on the internet, including on Simon Conway on 1040 WHL in the afternoon, where leadership from Mid-American Energy has talked about these tax credits. And they're playing the tax credit game. I get it. But I don't think Hardin County residents, rural residents, should be impacted by what wind energy does, especially when the parent company of the wind farm that is being proposed for my backyard isn't even on American soil. Now, don't get me wrong, I love international business. The day that I found out about this wind farm going in was a call from one of my neighbors, and I was sitting at the Des Moines Airport getting ready to fly to Sao Paulo, Brazil. So, this isn't about foreign companies, this isn't about domestic companies, but what this is about is the fleecing of the taxpayer, and the fleecing isn't even being done by a company here. It's being done by an energy conglomerate in Germany, on top of all the other negative impacts that wind energy has. The infrastructure impact on our roads, Mr. County Engineer. I was up in Wright County six, eight weeks ago, rural Wright County, where Alliant Energy's putting in a wind farm. What a mess. And I don't blame the install crews. They're there to do a job. But it's clear, as also has been demonstrated in other projects like this, like the Dakota Access Pipeline, when it went through western Iowa, when these crews are given a job to do and their paycheck hangs on getting the job done, they don't care what they do to our infrastructure, because they don't have to care. I wouldn't care. If I, if I had a job and a timeline and there was no accountability set up in the contractual agreements, why would you care? And after driving through the construction of Alliant Energy's farm in Wright County, heaven forbid, Mr. County Engineer, we see something like that happen here in a wet time of the year, because what a mess. Impact on taxpayer-funded drainage systems. Interesting graph up there. I've never been in this room before, so I've never seen that before. Pretty interesting. What happens when a school bus load of concrete is being poured into the ground, and when they're excavating it, they hit a county tile? Thanks to Ms. Sheridan, last night I skimmed through the current Hardin County wind ordinance, or wind turbine ordinance, and in the commercial section, since there's a private section and a commercial section, I don't recall seeing a single thing in there about when a turbine foundation screws up our soil hydrology and screws up our drainage systems that they're gonna actually have to do something about it. I may have missed it. I'm, I'm not a legal scholar by any means, but I tried to go through that ordinance that I think is 10, 12 years old. And there's not a lot in there that protects what the taxpayers have funded, as shown up on that board. Impact on our quality of life. The simple fact that as a rural property owner, even though I own just a small acreage, what, what rights do I have about having a wind turbine as close as, if, again, if I interpreted the ordinance correctly, 1,000 feet from the door to my house? 1,000 feet isn't very far. Hog sheds have to be further away than 1,000 feet, if I understand, in normal situations. A thousand feet, really? That's not very far. Impact on the landfill. Mr. Granzo, I believe you're the, the delegate to the Hardin County landfill. Many of you have probably seen the press in recent weeks coming out of Northwest Iowa about wind turbines being re-bladed, I believe is the correct term, and semi-loads of non-recyclable turbine blades showing up at landfills, and landfills shutting them off. Is our Hardin County landfill ready when the Garden City Wind Farm, for example, gets re-bladed and there are tens of thousands of tons of non-recyclable material rolling into our landfill?
Not yet.
I don't see it. I don't, I doubt it. Or in a few years, the wind farm north of Iowa Falls, or the one east of town here. It's just a matter of time, because wind turbine blades are not a infinite resource. They have a finite life, and when they're done, they're done. Impact on wildlife, birds, bats. What are these turbines doing to our wildlife? Impact on agronomy, growing crops. You put wind turbines in, you are drastically reducing the ability to use aerial application, whether it's for spraying bugs, killing disease, or spreading cover crops. You're drastically reducing that to the tune that many pilots refuse to fly around wind turbines. Hardin County deserves better. We deserve economic development, but we deserve authentic economic development. Let's focus on taking Hardin County into the future, and a few select Hardin County property owners should not control the entire landscape of what goes on. Had it not been for my neighbor calling me that owns some of the farmland across the road from my house, as an acreage owner that is on the risk of having a wind turbine nearly in my backyard, had it not been for that phone call, or the media, or social media, or people talking about this, I would have had no idea that there's wind turbines coming in. To me, that's unacceptable. Least livestock facilities get public hearings. There's nothing here. I know that opens a whole can of worms in itself. I ask that you all please act quickly to stop this crony capitalism, because that's what it is. Those of you that have driven on Highway 20 to Waterloo see a semi-trailer that's been painted with a "Saving Rural Iowa" URL on it and talking about wind energy being crony capitalism. I ask that you all please do something immediately to ensure that Eon Energy doesn't roll in this winter with their crews and ground heaters and start pouring school bus loads of concrete in the ground and completely bypassing the will of the people. Because I will tell you, as Mr. Knutson's also shared with you two or three weeks ago when he spoke, Leland Mosch, I believe, has submitted an editorial to the paper, presented you with a, with a petition. It doesn't matter where you sit on the political spectrum, there is a very large unified group of people that do not want yet another wind farm destroying rural Hardin County. So, with that said, thank you. Thank you for the job that you all do, and I'll call it quits. I don't know if I stuck to my three.
Thank you.
I can, when you talked about the drainage, we do have drainage ordinances as well, so they'd have to apply for that permit to take care of the drainage side of it. The rest of it? Yep, that's in the open.
Julie?
Does this now mean that the three-minute limit is not applicable anymore? For comment? Just to say, thank you.
Any other public comments? Bob?
I just wanted to comment about this rule about, yeah, legal documentation, why you can't approve a pig barn. If it is legal somewhere, could I get a copy of whatever that is that's telling you it's legal to do that?
We'll, we'll have to talk to county attorney and see.
Well, no, but you'll get a follow-up to let me know one way or the other.
Okay.
I don't want to be bothered every day and find it out. It takes a week, you know?
Yeah, okay.
When you find out, let me know.
All right. All right. All right. Yes.
Good morning. I come to you from Hanson Family Hospital and Clinics, and I just wanted to share a service that we will be expanding in January of 2020. Many of you might know that we do offer a wellness program in our rehab services area, and that will be expanding as of January, and they are titling it Wellness. For $20 a month, anyone from the public can come in from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to exercise in our rehab services area. You will start that program with a quick assessment, just as a baseline of your health needs, and you are able to come and really participate in that. I've been in there when those patrons are utilizing that area, and it's very much a community. And so, not only are you exercising, but you're able to kind of have a social gathering at the same time. So, I just wanted to come and let you guys know that. I do have the contact information if you are interested, or if you know of someone that may be interested, that that program will be expanding as of January. So, new equipment is arriving, and people are excited to get started.
Great. Thank you. Just to let everybody know, Megan is, is leaving, and it's gonna be going to Mason City Hospital, so we wish her well, and hopefully you'll have a replacement to keep us informed. All right. Is there any other business? Do we want to just recess for, for, say, five minutes, and we can review the claims, and then we'll, we'll meet with Taylor?
We can. I've reviewed them, though.
Okay. We have a motion to recess, or you want to just?
I'll move to recess.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to reconvene.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the claims for payment as presented.
All right.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, Taylor.
Well, we had a PowerPoint for you, but we're having a little difficulty in the technical right now.
Okay.
I think Angelo went to grab a flash drive. So, I'm gonna put that on here.
If it doesn't work, we have paper. One paper, full school, we have to.
How are you?
Good, I know you sound.
Good.
Which one is it? This one?
Right there.
Okay.
My horse pictures.
So, here's the mouse fart.
You go ahead.
So, as you guys know, I'm Corey DeBert. I was here back in September, October, to kind of talk to you initially about what we were doing for Timber's Edge, our new wedding event center that's being developed over by the Sack and Fox Overlook. I am 50% owner, and my brother Colin back there is other 50% owner. Today's agenda kind of is just a layout to you guys, what Timber's Edge is gonna be about, some numbers behind it, our plans. That way, as we start talking about entering into a development agreement, you guys have an idea of what the business is like. So, as I mentioned, this company's being owned 50% by myself, 50% by Colin. We are part of the Burke family. We've been in the area for many years. Couple of years ago, where my grandparents live, that farm was recognized at the Farm Bureau down in Iowa State Fair for being in our family for 150 years. So, we have deep ties here. We are farmers by trade, many years of production in the area. We are going nowhere. We care deeply about Hardin, Franklin County. A little bit about Colin and myself. Colin graduated from Iowa State here in 2016. He is the younger brother, the more outgoing brother, the more social one. Graduated from Iowa State with degree, degree in life sciences, agricultural life sciences. He works for our family farm with my dad, kind of oversees the operation from day to day. Myself, I graduated from Drake in 2009 with degrees in accounting and finance. Got my CPA license one year after that. I worked for the USDA for a year, because I wanted to have a big impact on farmers. I was gonna have a, this big role, but you find out quickly that when you're 22 years old, that doesn't always happen. Got, I went to Farmer's Co-op, which has now landed us in the area, managed the region, managed Bradford for them, and did a lot of capital financial analysis. Since taking the CFO role at Grand Givante, where I've been for the last seven years, and currently serve in that role as a CEO, I got my MBA and my masters in economics over the last couple of years. Moving on, so why are we considering a wedding venue? Probably the question that we get asked over and over and over again. So, part of it is, you know, we want to make sure that our family farm is successful for years to come, looking at ways of differentiating it, and we know that real life has negative, you know, connotations with it, and we want to show that there aren't always that negative connotations. And we believe, you know, since our family's been here for 150 years, hopefully, you know, many, many more, we want to show, you know, that we are committed to Hardin County, to making Hardin County better, and we believe one of the areas that is lacking in Hardin County right now is tourism. We want to see Hardin County be successful for years to come, so we're trying to figure out a way, how can we, as a family, kind of address one of those weaknesses? What is all included in Timber's Edge? And I mentioned primarily it is a wedding venue, but we all also do, you know, other events. But in the wedding package, what we offer is a rental facility up to 500 people, that's inside and outside capacity, a private bride and groom suite. Tables, chairs are all provided, set up and tear down by our staff. Centerpieces, we'll design and make your centerpieces for the table for you. That way, the bride doesn't have to worry about that. Provide light lunch for the wedding party that day with, hopefully, local, all Hardin County vendors. We'll provide a party bus between the wedding and reception, and we'll provide transportation from our venue at night to a hotel. That way, we don't, we don't worry about drunk driving. That is all free of charge. So, some of the relevant financial information, financing has been obtained from a local bank. Colin and I are both, you know, very adamant, making sure we keep that local, not getting that out of Hardin County. We want that to stay as local. So some of the relevant financial information, financing has been obtained from a local bank. Colin and I are both, you know, very adamant making sure we keep that local and not getting that out of Harden County. We want that to stay as local as possible. We are choosing almost all the vendors that we can from Harden County or the neighboring counties as much as possible. The total project cost about $950,000 to $1 million is what the project will be costing us. We are estimating for the first year, 21 weddings. Since we'll be opening, the first wedding will be end of April. We hope to have weddings out there all year long, obviously. But, you know, kind of our worst-case scenario, we're kind of planning on 21 for the first year. And 21 doesn't have any financial risk for us. We can pay the bills and make sure that we're actually operational. Currently, we have two weddings booked for 2020 as of today. We have 16 that are currently reviewing contracts. I don't know how many of those will actually commit, but we do have 16 out there right now. We have one booked for 2021 and then one for 2022. We have done a lot of Facebook marketing, a lot of people have seen. Haven't done, we are currently working on doing commercials and those will start coming out around the first of the year. So hopefully these numbers will pick up even more going forward. To give you an idea, we've talked to owners of other venues like this. Have called and talked to them. And most of these facilities are booked out about two years. So I think with strong marketing and after we get some events up and going, we'll hopefully have that problem as well. Next slide. These next three slides are four slides to kind of show you what the venue will be looking like. This will be what will kind of, on our property, be facing more towards the north, northwest, where the timber areas. So we're designing it kind of off of a barn shop kind of feel, a more rural feeling. We did go with a light, kind of medium gray style. Reason why we did that is if you're a bride and you're wearing a white wedding dress, that'll make the pictures pop a lot more. So we're trying to be considerate of the wedding party. Those barn doors will be able to open. That'll be the front of the reception area. So you're looking out to timber, which hence our name, Timber's Edge. If you want to have them closed during your reception, if it's too hot, buggy, cold, obviously during the year, those will be closed. But if you still want to see outside, once those doors are opened, those next pair of doors that you really can't see in there is all glass. So you can have those big barn doors open, but then have the glass door closed. That way you can still see outside during the winter. Or if it's cold at night or it's too buggy, you get the best of both worlds that way. Next one. Just another exterior view. This will be kind of more of what you see from the road on S-56. This is the floor plan, which I know from you guys back there is going to be really hard to tell. But I'll kind of walk you through it. On the left side, on the bottom left, is kind of where you come in from the venue. That'll be the entrance. That'll be your lobby vestibule area where wedding guests can drop off their presents or gifts, the welcome area. Then you walk into that big center area. That is the reception area. On the top north part would be where those big barn doors are. And then on the top left, you can see that's our catering kitchen. That, we will not be having like a full kitchen in there. It'll be a caterer's kitchen. Included in there is just pretty much anything. People can make the food off-site and then bring it in. Down the road, we may look at putting in a full kitchen. At this point, it's not going to be a full kitchen, just a caterer's kitchen. But there'll be ample space and storage and anything they need to make sure the food is good. Heat it up, reheat it there. We've got, it'll be coolers, freezers, anything they need to pretty much do to food there to actually physically make it. If you look on the top right then a little bit, that's where the bathrooms are, women and men. And then if you go down to the bottom right, that is the bar area, which will be accessible from both the inside and then also the outside. That way, if you're somebody like me who goes to a wedding and I don't want to be inside the whole time, I can be out on the patio. You can be out on the patio and still go to the bar and not have to transfer the whole wedding. Next slide. The site plan. So the building that looks angled like that, that is the actual building itself. And then all that gray is the parking. But make sure we have enough parking to accommodate all the people. That goes up against the driveway by Sack and Fox. And then the septic is right, a little circle right to the, left of that building right there.
Okay. What was the little building again?
Go back. The one that's facing like this. The circle, you mean?
Yeah.
Circle, that's the septic.
I don't know where the backup button is.
Oh.
Don't.
Okay.
The circle was a septic by the building. The building that was like that was the actual venue. Everything in front, that dark shaded gray was the parking.
Okay.
Then I will let Taylor kind of talk about the property tax analysis that we've done and some other stuff as well.
So this is anticipated property tax. Basically, the value of the project divided by 1,000 because the levy rates per $1,000. Multiply it by the applicable percentage. You will notice the tables are off slightly. That's because each subcomponent added together is, for some reason, not equal to the total levy rate. At least on your website. I checked it three times. So I'm not exactly sure what happened. It could just be a typo. Very minor differences. So between $900,000 and $1 million, that's the projected yearly tax. The subcomponent down here, the county, is somewhere in the low $9,000s to low $10,000 as the county levy rate. Now, we've asked you for TIF. We haven't made a lot of progress with getting that started. We would ask you to direct someone to contact your attorney if you're interested in the tax increment financing. I pulled all your records. You've used TIF three times. And I don't know if any of you were on the board because some of it's an old agreement. Pine licorice processors, something in Jennings Park, but it doesn't list a business name, which is fine, and the windmills. And that's the only time you've used this very powerful tool. That's also often used by cities or counties to solicit business in the county. I think we fill a need. My clients fill a need, which is tourism. Now, I'm not sure, does Harden County have a local option sales tax of 1%?
Yeah.
So the money coming into the county is subject to that, whether it's hotels, food, alcohol, et cetera, sales.
Right.
The more people you get in the county, the more money that's spent here. You have 1% local option sales tax. So I did, if they did 21 weddings, you average 300 people per wedding. I have no idea what the average size of a wedding is, to be honest. That's 6,300 people per year. If each person spends $100, that's $630,000 spent in Harden County. A 1% on that is $6,300, but it's $6,300 you wouldn't have had otherwise. The tax, there's also alcohol sales and that's levy different than anything else. Harden County stands to profit from this. And so what we're asking is that you contact your TIF attorney to start the process. We can do projections, we can do outlays, but nothing really starts until you contact that individual. Highly specialized knowledge. There's, I think, three people I know of that even deal with TIF. And Hailers and Cooney happens to be one of them. And TIF is frequently used for fixtures. So like I told Corey, think of if a business went broke, what stays behind? That's somewhat what you can spend TIF on. And Mark knows more about TIF than even I do. But we'd like to get this process started with the county and get the wheels moving. Now, I've been informed that the county's working on some countywide development plan. Quite frankly, I don't think that matters for these purposes because the development opportunity is here. TIF can't be granted after construction, as far as I know. And so we'd like a directive to have someone contact your attorney. They can tell you what there is to offer. Maybe they say, look, it's just not going to work there. Or they can say, this is the maximum TIF funds available. We prefer some upfront. There's also the backend TIF funding. But we just, we have to know what the county even has available to it before we can really talk and get something inked out.
And what I kind of, what I remember is when you initially came, I'm thinking that we requested like a business plan or whatever in writing. Normally, that's what a business does in order to get the process started. As far as the number of jobs, I guess the two of you would know better than I as far as what's usually submitted in writing. Because for us to go to an attorney, we need to know what the business plan is, how many jobs it's going to create, how many, and I mean, you've got some of that here, even for the attorney to analyze, is my thought. I was in the auditor's office when all those other ones were done. And there was always something submitted by the businesses, it seemed.
Who paid for the TIF attorneys when you were in the auditor's office?
There's a way to back in that into the TIF. Not really back any, but you can incorporate attorney's fees into a grant for TIF. So really it comes out of their property taxes to pay for your attorney's fees.
What if they come back and say that there's nothing there to be tipped?
I don't think we're going to have that issue with the million-dollar project, to be completely honest with you. I think you create a standalone TIF district. I don't think you can hook it into anyone else.
You use the frozen base value of what the ground is worth, the property is worth now. And then after the construction, it's the taxes created off of that increase in value that...
Which is the increment financing?
Daryl?
Construction has begun, right?
Yes.
And was, you said you obtained financing. Was the financing obtained with any assurance of getting any sort of incentive?
No.
So without any incentive, does this project stall, die? What happens to it?
Not this one. We have, Timber's Edge is one of our first projects we're launching. We have another one in the works as well. And if we can't get financing, if we can't get TIF through here, we'll take our other bigger projects outside of Harden County.
I don't know that...
Even setting a date.
Yeah.
To sit down and meet.
Does the board want to handle these directly from developers? Or do they want the developers to go through economic development director in that process? I mean, how, this seems to be like a leapfrog over what the purpose of creating the economic director.
Normally, in the past, they went through Cindy Lettwell at the time.
Can I, I see your resume and CV. I mean, I assume you have a business plan and everything. So I think if you have that in place, is that something that you can meet with Angela and Jessica on and get the ball rolling? And we set, you know, some SMART goals, something that's measurable, attainable, time-sensitive, and get that going sooner than later? If they have the information needed, then it's a matter of just initiating the formal process. I think I would like to know an answer. So if it's just a matter of compiling the data, having somebody analyze it, process it, and let us know if the project's feasible first, I think that's the first step. I'd like to see, you know, those determinations sooner than later. So I don't know. What's a reasonable timeframe, Angela? I agree, I want to utilize the asset.
I think Daryl would need to be involved.
Yeah, and Daryl. Right. So between Daryl, Angela, Jessica, and, you know, Timber's Edge representatives, we can compile, you know, what we need and get that process rolling, I assume. Is that...
I mean, if you want to meet before the end of the year, yet that would be fine with me.
Yeah. If we could somehow effectively communicate...
Can I ask, what is the projected completion date?
The first wedding is upended in April.
Okay. And from an assessor's standpoint, when will it be assessed? It would probably go on the tax rolls. It'd probably be assessed at that point. So it would actually go... The assessment, when's the assessment period?
January 1.
January 1 is the actual assessment period. So it'd miss this year's assessment period. So by next year's January? Right. You should still be able to go back. Typically, you know, whether a business plan is submitted or not, it's not the essential thing. What you're going to work with is, you know, there are projections for a tax base because that gives you the numbers that you need to have to know whether there's going to be something to tip. Again, when they are spot on there, it's going to be a base value on what the property is worth now. And then there'll be, when it's reassessed after it's completed, that increment then is going to be, you know, taxed. And that is what you can use to play with to either provide an upfront grant, to provide a rebate, you know, because we don't have tax abatement in the rural areas.
Right.
So this is kind of, can work similarly like what we have in communities where we have residential and commercial tax abatement for improvements on buildings or construction of new buildings. So it can work very similarly to that. But yeah, time is somewhat of the essence.
Incentives kind of are a two-way street. The county with public money incentivizes development and the development incentivizes county money because it's kind of reciprocal relationship. And I'm more curious about the future projects because that might seem to be more of the... What would incentivize the county using public money is whether on this project or the future project. So I would request, if through confidentiality agreement, that there be some...
Disclosure?
Disclosures of what those projects are and the scope and when they would be launched. And that would help because again, this is a two-way street incentivizing each other.
And I would stress to the county, too. Both of these gentlemen live in Harden County. So any profits even off the event center, if you know about taxes, in an entity are kicked out through a K-1, and even the profits are even taxed in Harden County. I mean, the money is really coming in and not even leaving the county at any point. Whereas with the windmills, the energy doesn't even stay here. And I understand why you tipped those because they have $40 million assessments. It makes sense. It drives business. Ethanol plants drive business. But at the same time, we're, and he's using local contractors, every dime spent is really staying in county one way or the other.
My biggest concern, and I want to be considerate of everybody's time, is how, I want to know, this is, like you said, Taylor, this is something we don't do every day or every year. And you've recently, after reading the time citizen, you helped, you're the council for the Iowa Falls, the city of Iowa Falls. So you helped with the Timbuk Brew project. So you're more familiar and have dealt with this more recently. But my, I just want to know how we can bring all the parties together, effectively communicate the needs and get data exchanged and get it processed and get something moving. That's, I want to know what the process, how do we make the sausage?
I think we need to set up a meeting date and present, and I'll reiterate what Mark said. A formal business plan isn't a...
I can pad that any way I want.
I mean, and, right. Corey wouldn't inflate numbers because it's CPA. But the business plan is just projections. There's, you know, it's not built yet. We don't have, we can't say this is what we average at this point. It's speculative based on, and we took, Corey took and Colin took farm ground, which from an assessor's standpoint isn't taxed overly heavily.
Right.
And then they dumped $900,000, $950,000 into it. There's a lot of increment there. And so I think we need to, I can send Angela an email if that's faster. I don't know what your schedule is. And we can lay everything out. But then we need some assurance that you're going to call that attorney because...
Daryl and I asked you guys for these sorts of things several weeks.
Well, then we were going to have a...
You know? So I think if we all get together and have that meeting, that's great. And then we can come to supervisors because that's kind of the final step. So that'd be great.
Well, and our general issue is just, we were supposed to have a workshop and it never happened. And then I get...
Because I think we were waiting for this sort of thing.
So maybe just open lines of communication.
Yeah. I was going to say that, I mean, I'll emphasize the effective communication. And I know we've had some hurdles. But I think it's time, if we're going to move forward, we have to move forward together and effectively communicate, you know, wants, wishes, desires. But let's lay out a path from A to Z and effectively communicate that. So if it's a matter of scheduling the time that's mutually agreeable within the next couple of weeks to get all this done and in front of everybody, I think that's probably the best way to... I think that's probably the best way to move forward, if that's agreeable.
Angela and Daryl can coordinate your schedules and, and I'll just, at this point, I think we need to just step back.
We'll be out of it until they're.
And.
I agree.
Yep.
You guys are the last up.
Yeah. But what you've presented is, I mean, is very impressive and I know business plans can easily be padded and manipulated. This is pretty hard to argue. I mean, it's verifiable through a contractor and through your architect of what the building is and isn't. It's hard to dispute that. And so I think that's a key piece of the puzzle. That's your data set.
Yes, can we get that in?
You, you have the copy right now?
Yeah, we have it now.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
You start some preliminary work of, you know, taking these projections. I don't know if you've got some detailed architectural drawings.
More than you want to know.
Okay, probably. I assume that. So, you know, you can sit down with the assessor and basically then work out what he believes it will be assessed at upon completion. So then you have some harder numbers to work with that you all look at then and, you know, make some pretty firm decisions. Because those, or, you know, the other option would be to enter into a minimum assessment agreement as well. So that you know that, you know, and I don't know whether the board would be willing to do that because that can also tie things up if they ever decide they want to sell it. Then that can create a bit of a sticky record as well.
Would be open to a lot of those things?
Sure.
I guess I'm right back to you guys setting a date and.
We'll take care of it.
Hopefully you can do that here before you leave. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so no other business. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.